Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special meeting of the Kingborough Council on Tuesday the 15th of June 2021. I will declare that the meeting is open and welcome everyone in attendance, including those in our public gallery and those watching at home. Our council's meetings are recorded and made publicly available on our website, and in accordance with council's policy, I request confirmation that the audio recording has commenced. Thank you, General Manager. I'd like to start by acknowledging the traditional custodians of this land and paying our respects to elders past, present and emerging, and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal community. Attendees tonight, we have councillor Sue Bastone, councillor Gidding Cordova, councillor Flora Fox, councillor David Grace, councillor Amanda Midgley, councillor Steve Wath, councillor Paula Reet, myself, councillor Jo Westwood, and we have an apology from councillor Christian Street. Our staff in attendance tonight, we have our General Manager, Mr Gary Arnold, our Chief Financial Officer, Mr John Breen, our Director of Engineering Services, Mr David Reeve, our Director of Governance, Recreation and Property Services, Mr Daniel Smead, Director of Environment Development and Community, Dr Katrina Stevenson, Manager of Finance, Mr Tim Jones, our Customer Services Coordinator, Ms Kelly Nichols, and our Executive Assistant, Mrs Amanda Morton. Are there any declarations of interest that any councillor or member of staff would like to notify us of tonight? Councillor Wath. [S02] Yes, thank you. Thank you,
Acting Mayor. I would just like to advise that I'm the current President of Channel Museum and I will be staying in the meeting. [S01] Thank you very much. Councillor Bastone.
I would like to advise that I'm the Chair of the Kingborough and Huon Business Enterprise Board.
Thank you. Councillor Cordova. [S04] I'll just declare that I'm on the board of Gymnastics
Tasmania. [S01] Thank you. Okay, with that, we move to Officers' Reports to Council,
of which we have the operational and capital budgets and rates resolutions for 202021. Do I have someone to move that please? Councillor Reet, and seconded by councillor Fox. Thank you, councillor Reet. [S05] Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to move the budget.
I'm sure that it is probably with a sigh of relief in one way that we're considering this budget without the uncertainty that we had at the same time last year. I remember it was a pretty somber mood. I don't think we're actually sitting around the table, we were actually all on a teams meeting because we weren't even able to come together to discuss the budget then. But we, as the report highlights, at that time, we needed to be really conservative because we had no idea what to expect from the pandemic and we were really travelling in uncharted waters. And I think to a degree, we actually still are because even though the major part of the pandemic is over, we do not know what is around the corner. And I think if we'd thought even two years ago that we would have a pandemic that would result in lockdowns and have a range of repercussions, that we probably would have sort of laughed at anyone suggesting that. And now we understand that that is a reality, and it could be a reality once again. But we did manage to come through that, I think, as a council and as a community, far better than we anticipated. The amount that we had set aside in the budget last year for rates remissions for hardships was not taken up in the level, at the level that we thought it would be, which it seems to be is a reflection of the fact that as collectively as a municipality, our residents weren't as hard hit as others were in other parts of the state. And we also managed to come through it as a council much better than we anticipated because we were able to actually, we had a forecast underlying deficit of 2.6 million, and we were able to reduce that to just under 1 million. And that is quite significant if you put that in the context of what we have experienced as a pandemic. I think now it is incumbent upon us to continue to reduce the remaining underlying deficit so that we can get back to a surplus. And as councillors would remember, it was only a few months ago that we did vote on a new long-term financial plan, and that plan set out that we want to achieve an underlying surplus by the year 2022 to 2023. And I think it is really, really important that we're able to do that. You may remember that we took on some interest-free loans when we had the opportunity to do so, and as the report highlights, it's really important that once the loans mature over the next three years, that we are in a position to have the cash to pay them back. I voted for the long-term financial plan because I believe we need to get back on a solid financial footing. We know that the Auditor General for many, many years has been looking at us, along with other councils, and pointing out the fact that we've had some underlying debt issues that have been historic and have been around for more than a decade, two decades more like it. And so I want us to repay that debt so that we can then in the future have some surplus cash to be able to do new and exciting projects for the residents who live in our municipality. And the budget that we've got before us tonight is in line with that plan. One of the things I'm particularly delighted to see is that we actually have a record Capital Works programme this year of just over $20 million. And for a council our size, that is a tremendous signal about reinvesting in our community, reinvesting in our infrastructure. It's a way of coping with our high levels of growth, but also being able to meet community expectations that are, that are part of, of the area in which we live. So that programme is quite extensive, and as well as the projects that will receive funding in the upcoming year, there is also a more comprehensive five-year Capital Works programme that is being presented to us tonight. It was interesting, and I wanted to thank the six individuals and the five community groups who took the time to engage in the public consultation around the budget. It's a very difficult thing to do to get people excited about commenting on a budget. They can be very dry, we know that. But thank you to the people who took the time to do that. I did note, I thought it was interesting, and I hadn't seen this come through in previous years. [S01] Time. Moved by councillor Midgley,
seconded by councillor Cordova. For how many more minutes? Two more minutes for councillor Reet. Thank you councillor Reet. All those in favour, please say aye. Those against? We have a division. All those in favour, please raise their hands. Councillors Bastone, Reet, Fox, Cordova, Midgley, Wath and Westwood, and those against, we have councillor Grace. Motion is passed.
Thank you. I just wanted to conclude by just making comment on the feedback that we did receive because, as I was saying, we had six individuals and five community groups, and a lot of the comment this year focused around infrastructure relating to things like playgrounds and shared pathways and public areas, places like Kingston Beach and the Channel Highway, and linkages. And I thought it was just a really interesting theme that was coming through that we hadn't seen in consultation that we've done on the budget before. And what was even more pleasing, if you look at the attachment that is there with the consultation and the responses that the council staff put together, is that a lot of those things that people had suggested that we were able to, to satisfy in this budget, or they were part of some longer-term strategic planning. So I just thought that was a really interesting theme, and it fits in very much with what the work that we've been doing with talking about local linkages, building on the Channel Highway redevelopment in this area. So I look forward to seeing the Capital Works Programme in particular come to fruition over the coming months, and I wanted to thank staff for the incredible amount of work that they always do in preparing the budget for us, and happy to move it tonight. [S01] Thank you councillor Reet.
Councillor Midgley. [S06] Thank you, Acting Mayor, and I'd also like to thank staff for your
time putting this budget together, and also the time after hours spent with councillors doing a number of workshops, and the time taken to respond to many questions, I'm sure, from all of us in regards to our budget questions and responding to the community as well. As councillor Reet said, there are so many great things regarding this budget. Finally, the solar panels at the sports centre, that I know many people sitting around the table here tonight have been pushing for this great outcome for a long time. The stage two of Kingston Park, that I'm sure we can all celebrate the stage one with just so much community love for the park, and the issue of where the buses park for schoolkids. The long-awaited CBD upgrade, again, another one that's been sitting around council for a very long time with the Transform Kingston Project. As I've said before, we'll be here, you know, in 10 years' time. I don't know if I'll be here, but I'm sure Kingston in 10 years' time will be a place that we can sit back and be proud of things that we have supported and the great work that staff are doing. And over $1 million of playground upgrades and new playgrounds and things like that, mostly all upgrades, which is, you know, I'm sure we're really well-loved and which is, you know, I'm sure we really well-loved and supported by the community. I have a couple of questions, or quite a few, maybe more than a couple, sorry. Just in regards to the new staff positions, can I just have an explanation on what exactly the new staff positions will be, please, in the budget?
Mr Breen.
Yes, through the Chair. In regards to our new staff positions, essentially, what the budget contains is a new role in IT, and there's been a number of, I guess, information provided to council in the past about IT particular related roles. And so this year we've taken the opportunity to fill that role, to provide additional support across the council. There's an engagement role, and I think one of the things we've seen of late is a strong push by the government for councils to spend a lot more time engaging with the community. And to be able to do that, we've put an engagement officer role in the budget. The third position is in planning. As you can see from the reports that we've been getting over this financial year, we're generating a lot of revenue in planning, and that's obviously on the back of the developments that are going on within the municipality. And from that revenue, and the additional work that's been required, a new planning role has been able to be allowed for in the budget. And the final one is two new positions within the Works Department will be engaged throughout the year to manage particularly the Kingston Park site and perhaps the broader CBD sites in the long run. And the playgrounds, once the maintenance contract finishes in that particular area. So they're the roles that have been included in the budget.
Thank you. Just a question around the engagements, sorry if I missed that one, in regards to a communication or engagement.
Mr Breen.
Yes, through the Chair. So yes, essentially, it's a role that's basically designed to meet the commitments council has to engage in broader, broadly across the community. So I think it's something that we've commenced work on, and we've been doing some work, and I guess the budget is a good example of work that's been done in that area. But certainly, I think the expectations that council does more in that space. And I might pass over to our Director of Environment Development and Community.
Thank you, Dr Stevenson.
We previously, council previously had one officer doing communications and engagement. It was simply an unsustainable workload for one person. So the idea of, is that we've split the media and com side away from engagement. And both those roles will work to build capacity across council, so that, I mean, even two people is probably insufficient. So we, they'll have a network that feeds into them, it'll be about building each department's capacity to do that, but they'll take the lead on major coms or major engagement activities.
Thank you. And I know some other councils have up to three engagement staff and three com staff. So I think we're a very lean, tight machine here at Kingborough, and we do really great work in that area as well, so thank you. I note, so we had 12 submissions from the community, that including individual and the community groups. I think, as we know, or as Councillor Reit has said, you know, sometimes people, budget talk isn't sort of that great community engagement, but I would love to see us in the future perhaps have community meetings around the budget, maybe we can call it the budget, and something else. Say on Bruny Island or the Channel, and even talk to young people, because there's so many projects in here that really do affect so many different age groups. And I guess one of the comments from, I'm just reading from the Blackmans Bay Community Association, I quite liked what they said. Sorry, I just have to find my page. They say, while some progress has been made in the consultation process between KCF Group and the council and the Blackmans Bay Progress Association, they'd like to see us upgraded to an outcome-based engagement process with a closer-loop approach where capital and major operational issues can be identified, considered and discussed with the resulting actions explained. So when the budget submissions information goes out, it's only the capital I'm quite sure that the community has been able to express their views on, or is it operational as well? And wondering a bit more in regards to if we could consider for next year's budget, perhaps looking at some ideas about having some community forums or discussions across Kingborough. Could that be a possibility?
I'll leave Mr Breen to talk about the community consultation part of things. But we do put out our entire budget for comment. And we are looking at the moment at the quarterly Kingborough Community Consultative Forum as a way of feeding back in feedback from all of the different community associations. But Mr Breen or Dr Stevenson, would either of you like to add something to that?
Just in relation to the Kingborough Community Forum, we had a meeting on the 5th of June. And I raised, as a new to that forum, and a new chair. The timing didn't work well for the budget cycle this time, but we did discuss it on the 5th of June and agreed that we will use the last meeting of the year to have a special budget-focused conversation. It's the last meeting of the calendar year, so that would be in December. And then that will, we'll be able to bring that forward into council's budget process for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of other questions. So, and the reason why as well I asked that one was because I attended an event with the Kingborough Thrives, which was after the budget submissions were completed. And many people at this event raised matters, I guess, that would have been great to put forward in a budget submission for other councillors to read, and one of them was particularly around climate action. And hoping for more resources, resourcing in the climate change plan to actually meet the climate action initiatives, because we have passed a climate and biodiversity emergency. So I note that we do have quite a few actions in the budget that are aligned to the plan. But I've also met with Mr Dool and have been provided with at least one, I don't know, 12 different sort of actions that are still yet to be completed. And I think every year they do continue to grow because of the need in this area. And also the resourcing in regards to having someone actually in that space, dedicated or resources in that space to be able to look, to apply for grants, to be able to seek other funding opportunities and to be able to build capacity with other councils. So I do support the budget before us tonight. It aligns with our long-term financial plan. And also reading on page 6, the point, 11.2, in regards to the risk and the Tasmanian Audit Office considers the current cash position to be less than adequate. The long-term financial plan is the agreed roadmap back to an underlying surplus and starting to generate positive cash flows. So I do support this budget for this next financial year. I would have loved to have seen more initiatives and actions in the area of climate action, but I hope that this can be considered as part of the mid-year review.
Thank you, Councillor Midgley. Councillor Grace.
Well, there's always an odd one out, and I will choose my words carefully. I believe that this budget has been no different than any other. No time I've sat on this council consultation, there must will be none. Because the most people I talked to didn't even know about the budget or any parts of the consultation. One of my colleagues mentioned a minute ago, we've talked about this, I don't know, until we're blue in the face, but it never happens. But the Local Government Act stated once that we are the stewards of the rate pass and we should get out and sell the budget. We are given that opportunity, the budget's driven by staff, passed by council. We have very, very little input into the budget, particularly Capital Works. That has come out quite clearly in the people I deal with. The rate increases are necessary. We've got so much money sitting in the banks. We've got all this free money that we got from the government. And we're saying, and our financial people have been telling us in the last, what, three, four meetings of finance, how well we've done and how little impact, if any, impact on the COVID to our rate pass. So, and as Dr Stevenson said, the forum group. I spoke to one of the members of the forum group, and it was too late. They didn't get an opportunity. The budget, as far as I'm aware, correct me if I wronged Dr Stevenson, wasn't even presented to the forum group. Okay, well, that we need to, okay, I'll finish.
Thank you, Councillor Grace. Councillor Fox.
I commend the budget. I think it's my 33rd budget that I have supported, and I'll support this one. I think it's wonderful that we're doing something about the CBD upgrade. I think there are some very exciting projects that are included in this budget. And I'm hoping that in the review midterm, we can do even more for climate change. But I'm really impressed that we're able to do the solar panels this year. I think it's a 2.8 rate increase is in line with our long-term financial plan. And hopefully by next year, we'll be getting rid of our deficit. I have attended the workshops and I recommend the amount of work, I commend the amount of work that's gone into preparing all that detail for us, and the amount of work that the staff do behind the scenes. I think it's impressive. And also, I'm very pleased that we've consulted with the community. We never used to. We used to get an input, but we didn't actually consult before formally the way we have this year. And it's wonderful to have had the response. And I'm very impressed with Councillor Reit and how she's summarised the situation very well for us and the questions that have been raised by Councillor Midgley. I think it's an excellent budget, and I'm really pleased to be sitting here around the table and being able to help carry it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Fox. Councillor Wath.
Yes, thank you Acting Mayor. I also endorse the budget. I believe that we have had plenty of opportunity to hear from staff, and we've had plenty of opportunity to work out what goes into or stays out of the budget. Like all budgets, it is a compromise, because all of us don't agree on the same things. But I do believe it's a balanced budget despite that. With Capital Works in excess of $20 million, there are rates and charge increases which are aimed at cost recovery, which is an important part of this. So it's not just setting a figure just because we need to increase an amount of money, it is in an effort to obtain cost recovery. When we look at the long-term financial plan, it was set up a number of years ago, so that over a period of time that we could have an underlying surplus, and that's finally within earshot, if you like, it's on the horizon in 22, 23. And I guess one of the big issues that we've had in the past is that we've seen things mid-year. And when we've had surpluses, instead of putting them and leaving them there, we have spent them. And I will admit, they have been on worthwhile projects for the community. But of course, every time that happens, that creates a ripple event. We all know the growing pains that we have. A growing population always has growing pains, because that local government instrumentality is unable to meet the infrastructure demands that that community places on it. And how do you best work around meeting those infrastructure needs? And we've done that. We've done that with our stormwater. And certainly, people could say, and did say in those early years, but I live at such and such, and stormwater is not an issue. Of course, 3Ks down the road, where there was a stormwater junction for them, had we not spent the money in that particular area, their road would have been cut off in a serious flooding event. I'm well aware that not all residents can easily meet their rates, that some have great difficulty meeting their rates. And we've always got to look at those people, despite, of course, the state government saying that we place a tax based on what is believed that the household can afford. And there are many people within our municipality who are, if you like, asset-rich, but cash flow poor. And I don't believe that those people that fit into that area should be kicked out of their home to move into another suburb, or another street, or over the hill. Take someone living at Kingston Beach, why should they have to leave Kingston Beach where they've lived for the last 30 years? Where they walk daily, where they meet with their friends, and they have a cup of coffee once a fortnight, or similar. Why should they have to go, if you want to use an elderly person, why should they have to go to Redwood Village or in that area where they know no one? And of course, the area of land is not flat. And that, to me, is an area that the federal government needs to address, and it doesn't come back to local government under the structure of rates. As I indicated, underlying surplus 2022, 23, it is close. We all haven't got some of our projects that we would like to have seen. It is a compromise. All rates, when we've set rates, all budget sessions are a compromise. It's, if you like, the majority rules in the best interest of the majority of people in our municipality. I believe we've done that this year. And certainly on that basis, looking forward to next year when we can see more light at the end of the tunnel, where we can finally say we've made it. So I do recommend the budget, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Wath. Councillor Midgley, do you have a question?
I do have a question, thank you very much. And thanks to a conversation with David Bain, who's in the audience tonight. It was noted that there's no budget line for the Spring Farm Playground. This was a council motion that funds from sale of Mount Pleasant. And will Mount Pleasant be allocated to Willow Bend and the Spring Farm Playground? I'm wondering if this needs to be included, or can it be added later?
Mr Reeve.
Through you Acting Mayor, it's not that unusual for council to make resolutions outside of when a budget's been put together during the year there, so that forms part of their budget process, whether it be through mid-year or through a council report that comes up there. So for that particular item there, it's been resolved by council, will form part of the budget going forward there. There's probably no need to necessarily amend what's actually before you, because it will form part of that. But it could be if needed.
Thank you for that question, Councillor Midgley. Councillor Bastone.
Thank you Acting Mayor. Like most councillors, I support the budget. And as most people said, there are lots of things that we all, pet things that we all would like in the budget that aren't there at the moment. But looking at the five-year Capital Works Programme, I'm incredibly disappointed to see that electric car charging is being put off until 24, 25. And I think that that's something that we really need to revisit next year, or even at the budget review after six months. The other thing that I'm disappointed in is that the Margate Oval Car Park expansion and ceiling, which I know the former mayor had long discussions with people about, is no longer even on our long-term, our five-year budget, Capital Works Programme, sorry. I'm not sure if Mr Reeve can say why that has been removed from our five-year Capital Works Programme.
Mr Reeve.
Through you Acting Mayor, so there is a current project this year for doing part of that work in the Margate Oval there. There certainly would be an intention to actually continue the ceiling of that. So part of it will be sealed down near where the main shed actually is. And that'll be probably the next month or so. And then the intention will be to do the rest of it, let it load a standard. And then the intention will be to do the rest of it at a later stage there. In answer to your other query you had about the electric car charging, we're currently in a process with other councils there to look at putting a station in there. So we've put in for a grant. So there is a listing further on in the five-year plan there that will probably be for a secondary car charging station there. So we're hopeful that we will be successful in the first one. If not, then consideration would be given to that in the next financial year.
Thank you. And I, there's several projects I know that we had in our, in our capital works programme for this year which have not yet been started, which is just off the top of my head, of course, Silver Water Park and Groombridge Road. Now, the year is almost over. We're midway through June. I'm just wondering, the money that has been set aside in the last budget, do we have a guarantee that these works will continue, even though it won't be done until next year now?
Mr Reeve?
Through you, Acting Mayor. So it's not unusual for any council, let alone Kingborough council, to actually have carry-forward projects there, which will be the same in this case there. So for example, Groombridge Road there, that's already come before council there in terms of the tender. So that's actually already been let. It's just a matter of when the work starts. So some of the prelim works have already started on that particular project there. And then the rest of it will go into next financial year. So part of the reasons for that are to do with contractor availability as well. So we make all the best endeavours to get these projects out in time there. But quite often, we'll run into issues associated with either approvals or contract availability. And that's the case with this particular one there. And similar for Silver Water Park there. Silver Water Park there has been gone through an extensive consultation process with the community there. It's in a design phase there. Public open space fund reserved, funded. And that one is actually progressing there, but will probably progress into next financial year before they get into the construction aspect of it.
Okay, thank you very much. I support the budget as it is. And as I said, I would have loved more money for the arts. I would have loved more money for the youth programmes. And I will be revisiting that at the mid-year budget because I think, like all of us, it's wise to see how we go. As councillor Reet said, we're not really out of the woods yet, and we could end up with another COVID shutdown or anything. So I support the budget as it is, but with the reservation that I would like to revisit parts of it at the budget review in six months.
Thank you, councillor Bastone. Do you have a question, councillor Grace?
Yes, I have a question, Madam Chair. Can we get a report on what projects can't we get contractors for? I don't see, and this is the second part of my question, I don't see many jobs advertised from here. But when I do, we always seem to get tenders. So maybe can we get a report on what, how many projects have been, not been able to go ahead this year because we can't get contractors?
Mr Reeve, is it possible to get that data?
Through you, Acting Mayor, yes. Certainly, it's possible to get that data there. I guess in answer to that question, in part there, if councillors are probably aware that there has been a lot of other funding that's been provided in the different sectors there, government funding and so forth there, that certainly seems to have affected the availability of contractors to do particular works, particularly in the building space, but also in the civil space as well at the same time. So quite often, even though we may tender the works there, and even though the contractor may make the best endeavours to say, yes, we will try and do that within an eight-week period or start with an eight-week period, sometimes that pushes out longer than that as well at the same time there. So unfortunately, that's just a reality of the world. We actually live in there. The availability of the contractors, we may get three or four that might actually tender for a project, but they're all in the same position there in terms of when they can actually start the project. So yes, unfortunately, that's just a reality of the world.
But my question relates back to that. How many projects have not gone ahead in this last financial year for the lack of contractors? I understand where Mr Reeve's coming, but my question is, I want to know, or the council want to know. And if we, look, what are we, 10 million unspent in capital works from the last budget? That's going on and on and on. And we've had some big projects, and some of our projects have run over nearly half a million.
Thank you, councillor Grace. We can take that question on notice. Councillor Cordova?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I would first like to thank our amazing staff. Budgeting is such an important part of the year, and our council's operations, it's so important. Budgeting is so important. So thank you to the staff for always going above and beyond for their tireless efforts during this pandemic, and for everything they do to keep our council moving. Thank you. And I'm really pleased with some aspects of the proposal, the proposed budget tonight. Solar panels on the sports centre and the additional staffing roles that are so important, particularly in the planning space, where we've got this ongoing growth in our municipality. And we obviously need the infrastructure to keep up, but we need planning staff to be able to to keep up with this incredible development application growth that we are seeing ongoing. A few questions to start with. Of course, electric charging does indeed need to come back onto this budget, electric car charging. And so I thank councillor Bastone for raising that. My first question is, please talk us through the expenditure in this budget as it relates to climate action and our strategic outcomes as a council, that we are, quote, "a council that acknowledges the existence of a climate change and biodiversity emergency and has in place strategies to respond."
Mr Brain?
Hi, Sir, the Chair. Essentially, within the NAB, the newly-named resource management, natural resource management group, there's a number of projects that have been set aside for climate change-related activities. So first under the coastal hazard, there's $63,000. $20,000 of that goes to the snow adaptation case study. $23,000 for groundwater monitoring programme. $15,000 for the Tinder Box Beach Coastal Works, and $5,000 for the Nebraska Beach Community Project. Under climate change, there's $27,000. $25 of that relates to adaption financing in association with the Griffith University. And there's $2,000 for the RSCI and STCA participation fee. The final one is energy and emission. There's $13,500. $3,500 relates to the dense-point solar loan repayments, and $10,000 for building energy upgrades. So there's those funds. And then within the capital programme, as pointed out, there's the solar and battery capital expenditure, and also the electric vehicle in the next financial year.
Thank you. In a climate change and biodiversity emergency, I think this council can and should do more. And I note all of those really important projects, and I thank the staff for those. We can do more. My next question is that this budget proposes to fund the Youth Art Prize, youth development, youth outreach, and YSpace operations. In Kingborough, there are an estimated 500 young people who are not currently in education, employment, or training, which is why I support a federally-funded job guarantee. My question is, is the money enough to meet the goals of our youth strategy, to make sure that those are met, which is that our council has committed to ensuring that young people in Kingborough aged 12 to 20 years will have their needs, issues, and aspirations embedded into existing and future events, programmes, services, and resources of council? So my question is, what is in this budget for young people aged 12 to 20 years old? And how does this spending relate to our youth strategy?
Dr Stevenson?
The budget is consistent with the programmes that we've run in previous years. So I think it's important to understand that while we have a particular youth allocation, the community services team work on a range of programmes collectively that will also access young people, as will the engagement coordinator's role. So the sorts of things that are in there are things like the school holiday programme, the youth action network, the youth art prize, outreach activities, and the move to the hub that is happening over this financial year with the community services team moving there. We know that there's a steady stream of young people that go down through the hub to the park every day. So they'll be absolutely primarily located to be able to reach out and start to engage those young people through our hub space.
Thank you so much. I'm pleased to hear about that because we acknowledge in the strategy that the young people we're talking about are our future residents, our ratepayers, our business owners, our civic leaders. And so it's really important that we adequately resource their development and facilitate their capacity to thrive. My next question is, and I'm now looking at page four of tonight's agenda, in the capital works budget. Of the proposed capital works budget, Kingston Park is set to receive $3.9 million. This is 19% of the total $20.2 million outlay, which means that nearly $1 in every $5 that is to be spent, nearly $1 out of every $5 that is to be spent on capital works will be spent on Kingston Park in the upcoming financial year. Meanwhile, the functional area of stormwater receives $1.72 million out of the total $20 million, which is just 8.5%. So that's less than $1 in every 10 is spent on stormwater. And this is despite the findings of our Stormwater System Management Plan, which found that, on page 39 of that Stormwater System Management Plan report, that our pipe capacity, one in two of our stormwater pipes, was not sufficient to withstand a once-in-20-year storm event, and one in three of our stormwater pipes cannot withstand the type of event that we should expect to see once every two years. So my question is, can you please talk us through whether or not the spending on the functional area of stormwater is sufficient to meet the recommendations of that Stormwater System Management Plan?
Mr Reeve?
Through you, Acting Mayor. I think this is a question that actually has been raised before, and I'll give it the same answer that I gave it before as well. So the SSMP is a very high-level document. So the stuff that's actually within there is at that level. What we are doing with it now is actually going into some more detailed flood areas on some of the places that have been identified through there. So those comments that are actually in there need to be taken in that context as well at the same time there. So with our stormwater budget there, we've put aside the amount of money we believe and have identified through our other various flood studies there. There is no doubt, as we continue to do some of these other flood studies there, that we will identify other projects as well that will need to go into the stormwater. If that budget in itself needs to actually be elevated as we go forward in the future there, then that would be a recommendation to council. That would be something that also would be reflected in our long-term financial plan. At this stage there, we think it provides a fairly good recommendation of what we need to do at the moment.
Thank you so much for that answer. And I note that it was reflected in the Kingborough Community Forum that a lot of community groups had concerns around stormwater. So I'm pleased to hear that there's flexibility there as we go forward. My next question is around, in our long-term financial plan on page four, it talks about developer contributions. And it says that council believes developers should be contributing more to public infrastructure in Tasmania as they do in other states. Value capture, as it is often referred to, sees developers of large subdivisions providing cash contributions for public infrastructure requirements which stem from their project. So my question is, what does this budget do to speak to that aspect of the long-term financial plan?
Dr Stevenson?
Through you, Acting Mayor. I don't disagree with the statement that developer contributions are something important that we should be looking at. But it is being looked at on a sector-wide basis through the local government association. And if history shows us anything, if we try and tackle it by ourselves, we will be picked off and, you know, sort of sandwiched between various political parties. So I actually totally agree. We need to look at developer contributions, but we need a statewide approach. We need TasWater involved in that conversation. We need state growth involved in that conversation, and all councils to apply it in the same way.
Thank you for that answer. I think maybe there's an opportunity in the mid-year review to look at that because for every month that we wait while developers are creating subdivisions and not paying their fair share, we as a council are behind. So whilst I take note of that answer to look at a statewide approach, I think something needs to be done in the interim so that developers pay their fair share in our municipality, forgetting the great benefits that come with living here and developing here. The next question about the long-term financial plan as it relates to this document is biodiversity. It says on page four of the long-term financial plan, "There may be an opportunity to increase revenue for the Kingborough Environmental Fund by reviewing the biodiversity offset policy against alternative tree valuation frameworks, such as the City of Melbourne tree valuation method." And further, it then goes on to talk about waste management as well, and says that there are opportunities within waste management. Can anyone please explain to me what this budget does, both speaking to the biodiversity offset and also speaking to the waste management? Thanks.
Dr Stevenson?
Through you, Acting Mayor. I'm going to let Mr Reeve answer around waste management. The biodiversity offset is complicated by our bylaw review and the changes to the planning system. We are making some interim changes to our processes so that we can continue. We still have the power for now to continue to apply that, but it is likely that we will lose that when the LPS comes in. And to be fair, we haven't quite got our head around what alternative mechanisms might apply at this stage. I can't see any leaping out.
Thank you. And now to the issue of the council's community grants that appear on page 28 under community services in this budget. They're currently set to $40,000 for the financial year. They used to be $60,000 each financial year. And at the last grant round, we were oversubscribed and some community organisations who sought a grant missed out. That includes safety equipment for sports clubs, only partial funding for some environmental groups, only once-off funding for an important healing country event.
So councillor Cordova, what's the question?
So my question is that it's more of a, I would like to move an amendment, so it's not actually a question. So I'm looking to move an amendment to recommendation one of the budget recommendations to add a subclause A that says, "Including an additional $20,000 to be added to the community services deficit to restore the council community grants to $60,000 for 2021/22," as it appears on the screen.
So you're moving that as an amendment?
I'd like to move that.
Do we have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Midgley. You're speaking to the amendment now, councillor Cordova.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. So we've discussed this previously, and I think my position is well-known, that my feeling is that because there was an oversubscription to grant rounds, and we used to have grants at $60,000 per year, and it would represent only a quarter of a percent increase to the overall budget, I think right now we're at a really important, critical opportunity. Because we're trying to recover from the pandemic, the best way that we can do that is to facilitate our community organisations to grow their capacity and let them thrive, and let them do the things that they do best. So by council restoring the community grants back up to $60,000, we clearly have the call for it there in the community, among those community service organisations, so many volunteers who do so much. And when they come to us asking for safety equipment for their sporting club, or to run an environmental project, or to run healing country events on Bruny Island, and when we aren't able to provide them with money to do things that would really benefit the community, for example, providing short-term food relief to people in need within our municipality, I really feel like just by restoring the community grants to what they used to be, to bring them back to where they were, I feel like that would be a great benefit to our community groups, and it would also serve the macro economy well. Because as we well know, at a time of when you need to economically recover, the best way is to invest in your community organisations, freeing them up to provide the services that the community needs. So as I say, this would only be an increase to the community services deficit. It's an additional $20,000. The council can afford it. And I think the community would be best served by restoring community grants to where they used to be. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Cordova. Do we have anyone else to speak to the amendment? Councillor Reet?
Thank you. Look, we did have this discussion recently at the last budget workshop that was held. Look, we did have this discussion recently at the last budget workshop that was held a couple of weeks ago. And I think many of us around the table do recognise the value of community grants. Likewise, we also recognise that there are a lot of other projects that each of us would have liked to have seen included in this budget that we weren't able to. And, you know, some of the things that people have already mentioned tonight, like youth things and art and, you know, street art and a range of things that, you know, where we asked to put a wish list together, then I think we all easily could do that. But during that discussion, we, I was, I understood anyway that we had sort of collectively, the majority of us had come to understand that we needed to pass the budget as it was and that the opportunity for additional items, as councillor Bastone has already mentioned, would be to look at them in the midyear financial at the end of the year so that we have a better idea of where we're tracking. But I also just was hoping that Dr. Stevenson could also just comment on the community grants because she's, that's under her area. And when we did have the discussion in the workshop, she made some really valid points about extending that programme or otherwise.
Dr. Stevenson.
Through you Acting Mayor, there is no doubt that the Kingborough Community value the community grants programme. It was recently reviewed, only reviewed at the end of last year. The criteria are such that even though we had more applications for grants than were, than there was money available, to be honest, we wouldn't have funded them even if we, some of them even if we had the money on the basis of the criteria that we use to assess. And part of that criteria is about ensuring that it is a grant, not a regular income stream to an organisation. So we are quite rigorous in ensuring that the spread of grants goes to a range of organisation and isn't done for repeat organisations all the time. So I think I would welcome a midyear review. I think there is opportunity to, we also discussed at the workshop other types of grants, event grants and things like that, that would give us some time to look at that. At the moment, that's not captured within the grant programme criteria. But, yeah, I, there certainly was sufficient money this year is how I would frame it.
Thank you, Dr. Stevenson. Councillor Midley.
Thank you Acting Mayor. Also, I'm interested to hear from Mr. Reeve in regards to perhaps there's opportunity, I understand, in regards to waste education with schools and perhaps a bit of pool of funding possibly available in regards to maybe a grant stream in that area. Or maybe it's not going to be called a grant, but perhaps something around waste education.
So that's a question in relation to the amendment moved by councillor Cordova. Mr. Reeve.
Sorry, so just to clarify on that, so I can, I'll just extrapolate a bit more. So in regards to councillor Cordova and the expression of requesting some extra money to the grant stream, I guess I did second the amendment and I was interested to hear what councillor Cordova had said. As a community member and I've sat and applied for many community grants, as a council employee at another council, I had to refuse many grants. There was never enough funding to provide grants to all organisations. But I know, and that's why I put forward a motion to review our grant, what we provide at council and things like that and to actually look at streamed areas. And one thing that I have discussed is that thought that many schools apply for grants, but yet they can't express that community benefit. And there's also a lot of schools wanting to do things around waste and waste education. So therefore, in those discussions, I've heard that perhaps there might be some extra money for people who might have been looking in a grant type round that wouldn't meet necessarily the Kingborough Community Grants area, but perhaps there might be some other opportunities and some money in other areas of council that perhaps might be available for a grant type thing specifically targeted to waste. So that's why I'm asking this question.
So the question is, although we have $40,000 allocated to our grants programme, we may provide additional funding over and above that in other areas. Mr. Reeve.
Through you Acting Mayor, so I think what councillor Midley is referring to there is the budgeting process for Kingborough Waste Services. So as part of that budgeting process there, we have considered how we can best deliver on the waste management strategy outcomes there. So part of that is actually working with the schools there. So we intend to put in a school education programme. But we also recognise the fact that Kingborough Waste Services also gets approached by various different organisations there in terms of helping out with particular projects they may actually have, particularly some of the school groups. So we have made some allowance within the Kingborough Waste Services budget there to actually support some of those requests from schools or community groups there that may actually be tied up with that education process as well at the same time. So quite often they'll have a project that might be a recycling project they might want to do with the children. And so we'd be looking at trying to be able to support that as well at the same time. So I think that's what the gist of the question was.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Any other contributions on the amendment? For my contribution, I don't support the amendment. As councillor Reet alluded to, we did have a very extensive discussion about us all having our own things that we would really love to see in the budget. This is consensus budgeting. There are nine councillors at the moment, eight of them here tonight. We do have different priorities because we represent a diverse group of people and diverse parts of our municipality. As councillor Cordova pointed out, we can do more, we can always do more, but we need to do more within our means. And we have an allocation of $40,000 for grant funding. And at this point in time, I think that's a responsible allocation which can be reviewed in the future. Councillor Cordova, would you like to sum up on your amendment?
Thank you Acting Mayor. Yes, so to sum up, we do have an opportunity to restore the community grants back to where they used to be. And we can do it now, we don't have to wait until the midyear review. Because the central question here is, is it within our means? And indeed, I think it is within our means because it represents a quarter of a percent increase to a deficit. And we know from an economic perspective that when recovering from a pandemic or economic shock, we need to invest in community groups, we need to invest to recover. And by giving our local community groups, which come from a wide range of different parts of our community and different belief systems and different age ranges, and they encompass the broad range and depth of diversity that our community has to offer. So that's why I think it's a good idea to free them up, give them more capacity by restoring the community grants back up to $60,000. And if the quality of the grant applicants isn't high enough, then we can review that decision at the midyear financial review. But for right now, when we're trying to recover from an economic shock, when we're trying to recover from the pandemic, let's give this capacity back to our community organisations by restoring the community grants. If we don't like what we've done, we can look at it in the midyear review. But let's start from a position of restoring our grant allocation back up to where it used to be, back to $60,000 per year to give maximum opportunity to community organisations, not just for waste, but for all things. You know, there are local community sporting organisations which probably won't benefit from a waste education programme grant. As brilliant as that idea is, a First Nations organisation on Bruny Island is probably not going to benefit too much from those kinds of things. So let's just open it up, restore the community grants back to what they used to be and give maximum opportunity to our community organisations to come to us with their good ideas and let us facilitate them to do the great work that they already do. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cordova. We're voting now on the amendment from councillor Cordova, seconded by councillor Midley to add the following to item one. Including an additional $20,000 to be added to the community services deficit to restore the council community grants to $60,000 for 2021/22. All those in favour, please say aye. Those against? All those in favour, please say aye. Those against? We have a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Cordova and councillor Midley. Those against? Councillors Grace, Bastone, Reet, Fox, Woss and Westwood. The amendment is lost. So this takes us back to your questions councillor Cordova.
Just to finish up my contribution, which is that this budget offers a range of things which are indeed positive. I feel that for this budget, the balance is wrong. For example, one in five dollars of Capital Works being spent on Kingston Park. I personally feel that the balance is wrong there. I feel that the balance is wrong with not having restored the community grants. I feel that there's so much more that we can do with climate action and with restoring, with actually doing stuff about energy efficiency and having electric vehicle charging stations and to really embrace that technological revolution that's taking place around us. I feel like that there is a lot more council can do. So every time we're presented with a budget, we have the opportunity to lay our values bare and to show what the principles are upon which we're predating our budget deliberations. And in this case, I feel that despite a few really good things, like the additional staff that we are so desperate for, I feel that the balance is wrong on this occasion. But I do want to reiterate my thanks to staff for going above and beyond every time and for having shepherded us through this really difficult and unprecedented time in our financial lives, but of course in our everyday lives. We're living through a really difficult time for so many people and that's why I want to lead with compassion and to lead with a budget that really helps out those who are struggling. And on this occasion, I feel like we haven't struck the right balance. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cordova. For my contribution, I support the budget. I think the last couple of years have been very difficult for council. We've been tasked with a big responsibility to balance competing demands with responsible financial management. Our residents haven't been as hard hit as we originally anticipated. It doesn't mean that they haven't suffered angst as a result of COVID. And certainly, I don't think that we are out of the woods just yet. We need to be very careful and we need to think very carefully about what we fund and what we don't fund. As has been pointed out, we do have a long term financial plan which guides us in our decision making. We have a long term consumer price index indexation link to our indexation of rates at 2.5%. Last year, that 2.8% was rebated through a COVID rebate to our ratepayers. That won't be happening this year. We are focusing instead on providing targeted assistance where it might be needed. So if our ratepayers do have some difficulties in paying their rates bill, I do encourage them to come and talk to us about that. We are experiencing growing pains. There was a really informative piece on the ABC News a couple of weeks ago about our growing pains. And I'm pleased to see that we are putting on another planning role to meet the growing demand that we're experiencing in our municipality. I'm also very pleased that we are having a new engagement officer role because that's been something that a number of councillors have raised over consecutive budgets. That's really important and I think we have created an expectation within the community that we will do more engagement. So I'm very pleased about that. We have had three workshops into this budget. We have had quite in-depth discussions about the budget and opportunities to go through the budget line by line. I know myself, I've been through each line item in the operational budget and the capex multiple, multiple times. And I think that the community has had more of an opportunity than ever before to contribute to the budget. We, and an example of that is a new community group, Friends of Berwood Drive, who put in a budget submission along with another member of the community about a gravel pathway in Berwood Drive. And I think that's a really good example of councillors listening to the community. A number of us met on site with those residents. And whilst things don't happen quickly in the world of government, it just goes to show that advocacy and taking an active interest in what's funded through the budget can result in good outcomes. We have also got for the first time a full FOGO service as part of our budget, an extra $95 per year for full curbside collection of food organics and garden organics, which will go a long way towards our waste management strategy and our achievement of that. And that's the other point I wanted to make was that the Kingborough Community Consultative Forum is a quarterly meeting of a large number of community groups which will hopefully have the opportunity to feed into our budget process as we go forward. I know that they use a template, some of them, to put forward their minor and major works priorities, which are considered as part of our budget. And so I think that there is ample opportunity for the community if they're engaged and interested to contribute to our budget. So I thank staff and I thank councillors for your consideration of the budget. And I'll hand over to councillor Reet for summary. Thank you councillor Reet.
Thank you Acting Mayor. I think you summed it up quite well. And it was great that when fellow councillors made their contributions that they highlighted particular projects that are included in this year's budget so that residents who are watching this can have an idea of some of the things that are in there if they haven't taken the opportunity to look themselves at the paperwork that's been out. Although, having said that, there will of course be information that goes out, a flyer that goes out with the next lot of rates notices and there'll be information in the Chronicle and on council's website and no doubt on our social media pages as well. So thank you to members for highlighting those projects. I did want to just make one comment and that was that there was a comment made that we have significant amounts of cash in the bank. That is not an accurate comment and I would draw councillor's attention to item 11.2 on page six of the report, which says very clearly, Kingborough council is currently not in a strong cash position. The Tasmanian Audit Office considers that the current cash position to be less than adequate. And the long term financial plan is the agreed roadmap back to an underlying surplus and starting to generate positive cash flows. So I just wanted to highlight that because I think it's important that there is a collective understanding here that we are not cash positive at the moment. So it's not correct to say we have a lot of money sitting around that is not allocated because we have an underlying deficit that is an historic one that we have been working very, very hard towards. So it doesn't mean that we can go around and fund a lot of extra projects or anything like that. But what we're doing is taking a responsible approach to the budget management in the hope that we can achieve a surplus. And then we have some opportunities to do some more exciting things for our residents within the municipality. So I thank members for their contributions.
Thank you councillor Reet. We have before us a motion moved by councillor Reet and seconded by councillor Cordova. Oh, sorry councillor Fox. Sorry about that councillor Fox. From points one to points 21, I won't read them out. They are printed in our budget paper and on the screen before us. All those in favour, please say aye. Those against? We have a division. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Councillor Bastone, Reet, Fox, Midley, Woss and Westwood. And those against? Councillor Grace and Cordova. And that is, the budget is passed, the recommendation is accepted. Thank you everyone for coming tonight. We, this has been a special meeting of council to pass our budget and we will be meeting again on Monday next week. Meeting closed at 6:39pm.